Good evening. We'll call the Reno County Board of Zoning Appeals, August 17, 2023 meeting to order. Staff, will you call a roll?
Shortfeger.
Here.
Stran.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Seltzer.
Here.
Macklin.
Here.
Martin.
Gertson.
Here.
Welcome to everyone. I wasn't here the last month, so I had a chance to review the minutes. You guys were busy. I trust that everyone has had a chance to review those minutes, and then the Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion about the July 20 minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the July 20, 2023 Board of Zoning Appeals minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Minutes approved. To ensure the rights of all parties of interest and to provide an opportunity for each party to address the Board of Zoning Appeals in an orderly manner, the BZA will follow the fact-finding procedure which is outlined in the handout in each chair. Your attention to this procedure is appreciated. All decisions by the BZA are final. Decisions may be appealed to the District Court within 30 days of the decision. If a decision is made tonight, that decision will be based upon the record of information presented to the BZA. I'll now formally open the public hearing regarding case number 2023-08, a request by Gary Neal for a special exception from the Reno County zoning regulations to allow to remain in place and under construction a 30-foot-by-40-foot residential accessory building and permit a total of 2,640 square feet of accessory buildings. The total square footage of all accessory buildings exceeds the 2,000-square-feet maximum permitted on a parcel less than 2.0 acres. Property is zone R2, suburban residential district, and located at 7701 North Monroe Street. Have any BZA members had any outside contacts with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Do any BZA members have any conflict of interest in this case? Will the applicant please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record? You have 10 minutes to present your case. Additional time may be allotted at the discretion of the Chair. BZA members may request clarification at the end of your presentation.
Well, my name's Gary Neal, and yeah, I'm the guy. Anyway, I feel kind of silly because I've lived there since '87. I found out I was lying to everybody. I told everybody I had a couple acres, but I've only got 1.97. So anyway, that's the reason for the... And I had the... I've had a repair business in Hutchinson for 20-some years, 25? I don't know. A while. Anyway, I'm retiring, and I didn't realize it was going to sell as quick as it did. I need to be out of where I'm at by October. But anyway, the building is for some cars that I've collected over the years. And I'm not going to run the business. I'm done with that. And I don't know what else to say. I didn't mean any disrespect to them things before I got a permit. I got to get a permit, and that's when I found out that it wasn't as simple as I thought. So I guess that's it.
Does the Board have any questions for that?
Do I understand that the need for the permit was because it wasn't quite two acres?
Yeah.
If the surveyor would have sneezed.
Well, I spent a little time trying to prove that it was bigger than that. They couldn't find the pins, and by the time you make an appointment with the guy, I mean, it's too late anyway, so.
Gotcha. When did it occur to you to apply for a permit?
Do you remember? I don't know. The guy building it, they said they'd be here, but he couldn't make it. I got a call right before. Said, "Well, we might as well..." He said, "You're out here in the county," but I said, "Okay, I'll go ahead and might as well try to do it correctly, get a permit." So he came and visited with Mark also, and then I came visiting with Mark, and so...
Are you visiting with us?
Yeah. I suppose it was May, I don't know. Do you remember Mark? Is he...
It was probably, yeah, May. I would say first part of May.
Something like that.
Yeah, phone calls.
But I already had arrangements to have, you know, and the price of the building goes up every 30 days. And anyway.
What was the status of the building when you applied for the permit?
They had started. I mean, I think it was just as far as the dirt work and stuff when I got in here.
Was this all contractor handled?
Yeah.
It's not a DIY job?
What's that mean?
It's not a DIY... Do it yourself. Sorry.
No, I had to pay for it. Only I did have one neighbor stop by and tell me how nice it's looking, so that's a self-fulfiller. There's nobody can even really see it from... My neighbors are quite a little ways away, and there's woods all around it, so.
Is it fair to ask who the contractor is?
Yeah. Sunrise Structures.
Sunrise.
Sunrise Construction, I think. Yeah. Reuben Miller is the... They're brothers, and Reuben's one that I dealt with.
Board have any other questions for that? Thank you.
Mark Von Achen, county planner. Had you heard? This is a request. It's to construct a 30-by-40 shed. Under our special exception section of our zoning regulations, if you recall, we changed this last year, a property that has 2.00 acres or less is limited to 2,000-square-feet of accessory buildings. Properties that are 2.01 acres and greater are limited to 5,000-square-feet. And also in that regulation, we have the provision that if a person has about 2.5 acres or less, they have the opportunity, if they still choose to provide me the deed to the property, to kind of prove how much acreage they have, we would do a calculation to verify that acreage. As you can imagine, here in this property, the appraisal office shows it as 1.79 acres, and so I had a conversation with Mr. Neal and asked him, "Well, give me the deed so we can see if we can find about another three, three-and-a-half tenths of acreage here." Then you wouldn't have to go through this. You know, if we can get him to 2.01 acres or greater, you're limited to 5,000-square-feet, I'd be able to issue a permit for that building. He provided me the deed. We did the calculation, and unfortunately, we're sitting at 1.97 acres, so we need like another 400ths of an acre to be able to get him to the point where he has 5,000-square-feet of availability for accessory buildings. So unfortunately, he has to go through that process, but it's a good thing in the sense that it's a black-and-white line. There's not a gray area in there. And so, yes, we're going through a special exception process for this structure. He has two other buildings, you know, out there already. We talked about possibly demolishing one of them to maybe get him to be under that 2,000-square-feet. Even if we did that, he still wouldn't meet that qualification of having less than 2,000-square-feet of accessory buildings, and so his only option really is to go through this special exception process. To help orient the Board, where we're at here, we're on North Monroe Street. We are just a little bit north of the special exception we did in Blue Springs subdivision just last month, and that person actually got a notice for this public hearing as well. As highlighted, it's property number 17 on your map. It is zone R2 on the west side of North Monroe Street. So as I say, that he's seeking approval to have 2,640-square-feet of accessory buildings. During our conversation with that, he did mention that, you know, he's under contract to have the building built, and so I did explain to Mr. Neal, you know, kind of the consequences that would happen if, for some reason, the special exception would be denied by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and so he understands those consequences with that. Setbacks for R2, you're looking at 30 feet off of the road right-of-way, eight feet off your side property lines, and 20 feet off of the back property line. In reviewing his site plan that you have in your packet, he does meet those requirements here. This doesn't show very well on the screen here, but you do have a copy of his site plan in your packet here. The blue line is his circle driveway, and the building that we're looking at is the one that's on the far south side of that. And I'll have some other pictures, you know, of that here. This is kind of how we're you on the south east part of the side. That's Blue Springs subdivision, and then the little button there, that's where his property is located. As you can see, there's many trees that surround his property, but also the surrounding properties as well that would help kind of shield any kind of building, any kind of issue that a property owner may have. Little bit close-up building. You can see his house right there, and then you also see the circle driveway. Actually, the clearing area that you kind of see on the bottom, where the two vehicles are located, that's probably where the building is approximately located, right at the southern end of his property. As you can see, it's completely surrounded by trees. Probably be very hard for any neighbor, if at all, to be able to see that building. This is a Google Earth shot taken from June of 2022, looking kind of down the south side of his circle driveway. As you can see, there's many trees that are in there, and so you'd have to really be looking hard to be able to see his building from there. And so with that, staff has reviewed everything with this case and recommends approval of it. Three conditions that we generally put on there: Building can exceed 1,200-square-foot; building can't be used for commercial or industrial purposes; and then it cannot be used as a single-family dwelling except to comply with our regulations. We sent notices to 21 different property owners, and as you can see, I did not have anybody respond in favor or against the proposal. So with that, I'd stand for questions.
Are there, you know, any utilities involved in the building?
Utilities as far as him putting in?
Yeah, water, electric, any of that, sewer, any of that stuff.
No, I did not ask those questions. Mr. Neal could answer that.
I'll look at electricity in it one of these days. That's about it.
That's it? Mark, this isn't specifically related to this case, but we seem to be getting a surprising number of cases where construction's already begun. Is there a way that maybe, like, we can engage the county's communication specialist, or maybe get some reminders out to the public on the process for building in Reno County?
We can certainly look at that, and that'd be one way of probably try and get the word out of the need for building permits, but also the need to just ask in, you know, ask, say, several months ahead of time before you sign a contract with the contractor, because you could potentially end up having to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals to get approval for a building. So, yeah, that's something that staff will look at in the future, to do that.
Great. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm kind of, I don't know what about... This is our third case where we've had no permit, building starts, and from the road, it looks like this building is, at least externally, mostly complete. And so I wonder what's missing, especially with a contractor involved. We need something so we don't keep getting confronted with this, and I mean, I just feel like after a while, the word will be, "Just do what you want, and go get a, you know, make an appeal and get approved." And that bothers me.
I mean, we can always try and make contact with the contractor, but that's still not going to necessarily convince them to do that. And so it's a tough situation, you know. I think you just got to really focus in on land use again, and not that a person isn't getting a permit ahead of time or anything like that. You got to say, "Okay, well, it's happened. It's a staff issue that we have to deal with on that end, whether we do other fines or something else." I think you would focus on the land use situation as far as, is that building appropriate to be on that property, regardless if it was built before or after a permit was issued?
Maybe it's a topic for a future discussion for this Board, maybe on an agenda item.
Yeah.
Outside of what... I mean, we could discuss it here, but it doesn't have any bearing.
Yeah.
So what are the... What would be the consequences if this is not approved?
If it's not approved, then it would have to be removed from the property, I mean, or reduced to the sense that we can get down to a 2,000-square-foot limit to where I can issue a permit for the building.
Similar to that one that we did deny here, I don't know, three or four months ago. The guy basically had it like 10 feet off the road right-of-way.
Yeah.
We denied it, and he wound up dirtin', had his post set, and he had to take his post out, and he moved the building to a different location.
Right. It was a setback issue instead of not just not getting, having a permit.
Yeah, it was kind of a combination of the two.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it has to be in compliance with the regulations, and so that would have to be removal of the building or potentially acquiring additional acreage from his neighbor to where he can get his land above 2.01 acres. Then we could issue a permit because he wouldn't need the special exception anymore. But it's difficult.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Mark. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this Seeing none, we'll go reading the rest there. Do you have any other additional statements you'd like to make about this building, about this application?
No, not really, I guess.
All right. Staff, do you have any additional?
I have no other comments, Mr. Chairman.
Does the Board have any other questions for the applicant or staff? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Acceptance or denial of the special exception must be based on the public hearing record of information and in its opinion as a matter of fact, such special exception will not adversely affect the uses of adjacent and neighboring properties. This is time for us as a Board to discuss this case and ask procedural questions of staff only. Any other further discussion on this case? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
I'd move the case number 2023-08, a request by Gary Neal requesting a special exception from the Reno County zoning regulations to permit the total square footage of all accessory buildings on the parcel to exceed the 2,000-square-foot limit in the R2 suburban residential district at 7701 North Monroe Street be approved, allowing a building 30 by 40 in size for a total of 2,640-square-feet of total accessory building square footage as requested in the application and subject to the conditions listed above, based on the reasons stated in the staff report and as heard at this public hearing.
I second the motion.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, staff, please call a roll.
Shortfeger?
Yes.
Stran?
No.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Gertson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for going through the process. Is there any other business to be brought before the Board of Zoning Appeals?
I don't have any other business, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor of adjourn to BZA, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Anybody need a quick break before we open the Planning Commission portion? Call the August 17, 2023 Reno County Planning Commission meeting to order. Staff, will you please call a roll?
Shortfeger?
Here.
Stran?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Seltzer?
Here.
Macklin?
Here.
Martin?
Gertson?
Okay, again, I was absent last month. Folks had busy planning commission agenda. Trust that you've all had a chance to review it as I have, and the Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the July 20 planning commission minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the July 20, 2023 planning commission minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes approved. To ensure all the rights of all parties of interest and provide an opportunity for each party to address the Planning Commission in an orderly manner, the Planning Commission will follow the fact-finding procedure which is outlined in each chair. Your attention to detail to this procedure is appreciated. If a recommendation is made tonight, that recommendation will be based upon the record of information presented to the Planning Commission. The county commissioners will not conduct a separate public hearing or accept additional written documents. The county commissioners will consider written requests for additional public comment or documents based only on valid claims that the public hearing process was incomplete or based on new information which has become available since the public hearing. For purposes of this county commission policy, a public hearing is considered incomplete only if the planning commission failed to follow its procedural guidelines, which resulted in a denial of due process to a party of interest, or if the planning commission failed to allow an interested party an opportunity for public comment. For purposes of the public... For purposes of the county commission policy, new information shall pertain only to the germane information which did not exist at the time of the public hearing, or which was unknown or could not have been discovered with reasonable diligence. An example may be a traffic study completed after the planning commission recommendation. Planning commission recommendation to the county commissioners will be accompanied by a summary of proceedings before the planning commission at its public hearing, along with the report and recommendations of the county planner, letters, informal petitions, and other information constituting the record of proceedings provided to the planning commission before and during the public hearing. If the planning commission makes a recommendation after tonight's public hearing, this case may be presented to the county commissioners in approximately two weeks. Contact planning staff or visit the website for the county commissioner agenda items. I will now formally open the public hearing regarding case number 2023-07, a request by Jack Redman to vacate a portion of 40-foot easement for future road utilities, road and utilities located on Lot 6, Block 1 of Rolling Dunes subdivision. The address of the property is 803 East Rolling Dunes Road. Have any of the planning commissioners had any outside contacts regarding this case?
No.
No.
Do any of the planning commissioner members have any conflict of interest in this case?
No.
Will the applicant please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record? You have 10 minutes to present your case. Additional time may be allotted to the applicant at the discretion of the Chair. Planning commission members may request clarification at the end of your presentation.
My name's Jack Redman. I live at 803 Rolling Dunes. I'm trying to get rid of this easement for a couple reasons. One, I don't want to lose any more land if the road does go through my backyard. I have, I think, close to 12 acres. And two, I don't want any more neighbors around me. I mean, I move out to the country, so I don't have neighbors. And another reason, I think anybody that's interested in keeping this easement, like Tracy Peterson or Rodenbacher, or whatever his name is, I think is just interested in keeping it for financial reasons for themselves. I have no financial interest in it. I just want it gone, so I don't have to deal with any of this type of stuff anymore. So I think I've been dealing with this since, I want to say, May or so. Trying to figure out how to get it vacated, and so I wouldn't have to, you know, every time somebody thought they wanted to put a road in, I wouldn't have to, you know, call Mark or see what I needed to do or come to another meeting. So that's really my interest in it. It's kind of short and sweet. I just, I don't think it needs to be there.
This is what, a roadway easement or utilities or what?
Utilities, both.
Both. It's both. It's identified as a road and utility easement, this 40-foot line.
Put in one that was originally planted out.
When the subdivision was originally planted.
Do you have any photos or anything that shows where that is in relation to everything else?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. I will present. I'll have a bunch of slides here that help people more understand everything. Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Do you have any intention of constructing or doing anything in that easement?
No. No, I mean, it's just pretty much just land to keep me away from everybody else. It's kind of my backyard, but I... It's just trees and shrubs and stuff like that, so.
Looks like according to the drawings, the easement goes on to the, I assume, to the doors up towards 82nd Avenue, but you own that land up there, is that correct?
I don't know, Mark.
No. No, he does not own... He does not own any land north of Rolling Dunes Road.
And I think that part of Severance is open.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I'll go through a bunch of slides here and situations, and I'll try and help the Board understand this more clearly, given the email that you had received from a concerned neighbor here just this week here. So this is a request by Mr. Redman to vacate this easement. This easement was part of Rolling Dunes subdivision, and Rolling Dunes was planted and recorded at the Register Ds in 1964. This area of the county became zoned in 1958, so this was a fairly new development when we first zoned zoning county. When you are considering vacating of an easement, road right-of-way, setback, whatever, there's different statutes and different criteria that the Board has to consider. Those three things that you have to consider are going to be the proper notice was provided to the public, that the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience by such a vacation, and that no private rights will be injured or endangered here. So with my public hearing notice, we only notify the people that are directly adjacent to or potentially affected by this easement. We also notify all the utilities in there, because one of the reasons is we want to protect their rights of their utilities to be in that location here. And so part of this process, A11 was called, and we also sent public hearing notices. No utilities were identified as being in that easement, and actually Kansas Gas actually responded to my public hearing notice, saying that they have no concerns, and you had that comment in there. The reason we're vacating this easement and not vacating the little triangle that you see on that portion is because of the fact that there is actually a utility pole that is sitting in the road right-of-way of Rolling Dunes Road. And as Mr. Macklin mentioned here and Alan confirmed, that 7th Street does go further to the north. Now, it's only 40-foot wide. It's part of that original easement. It's only a 40-foot wide road, but it's actually a traveled road that people use for access to the property, and I'll have all of some photos to show that. So the other reason we're not vacating that triangle is for the fact that on the right-hand side of that drawing, there is a 20-acre piece of ground that was divided off many years ago. That 20 acres was not divided off correctly and did not have proper road frontage at the time that it was divided. So therefore, no zoning permit is going to be issued for any kind of building structure out there. That land was to be used as farm ground, but now somebody wanted to sell that land and be able to build a house on it. And so in order to meet the regulations at that time, that person had to have 60 feet of public road frontage. public road frontage. This easement is not in, it's not a public road, it is not considered public road frontage, so in order to assist in making this a buildable parcel, Mr. Redmond and the property are at that time agreeing to sell this tiny triangle of land that has that telephone pole in there, telephone pole if you will, and that made that twenty acres on the east side a buildable parcel eligible for a, a zoning permit. By him doing that, now he would like to vacate the rest of that easement, so nobody else can come in and construct a public road, because that's the situation we were at. Anybody that wanted access to their property could actually come in and construct a public road, meaning our standards, our subdivision standards, but still they would have that ability. If you vacate that, then it becomes his private property and nobody can construct a public road anymore, or install utilities for that matter without his permission. So I'm going to kind of go through a, a series of slides, uh, here to kind of help orient you where you are. This, in the middle of the picture, is a section of ground, one mile by one mile, okay? Plum Street is on the left-hand side, and the roads are laying one in pink, okay? So you probably can't read them on the slide, but you actually have.
Can we turn these lights up?
I can turn one of them off that might help you a little bit better.
Those are the sun that's saving me a hard time.
That be better? It may be blurry on that screen anyway, but you have the same map. That a little better or no?
It's better.
Okay. So Plum is on your left-hand side, eighty second avenue is on the top. To the east or on the right is Lorraine, and then on the south side is sixty ninth avenue, and so if you go to Plum and eighty second up in that top left corner, and if you go east, you'll run into Severance Street. That's that little, uh, portion of that road that is actually in, and people can actually drive on that. Then the road that kind of goes back to the west and reconnects to eighty second is Rolling Dunes Road, and so, so Mr. Redmond's property. Oh, oh, that didn't work. Let's see. If I can use my, uh, oh, I can't use my cursor now. Thought I could use my cursor. Oh, okay. So we have another malfunction here, and so. So help orient you.
That, that first picture we had from the applicant that showed the, the green, show me where the green is on that particular picture.
So the green, this is Mr. Redmond's property, right here. So the easement, or so this highlighting green is going to run down the east side of his property up into this line right here. Okay? So you're looking on the east side of his property. He owns all this.
Does that, does that easement continue on south, or does it end at the, at, at Mr. Redmond's?
Ends at Mr. Redmond's property right here in that, that corner, so, so.
Did I, did I understand you said that was originally planted in nineteen fifty four?
Nineteen sixty.
Sixty two.
Sixty four. It's in the, it's in the staff report. It'll have it in front of me, so. Nineteen sixty four, it was planted. Okay? And so. That's, that's where it's located, so. That even, right, is on his property only, and so, and it ends, right, his property, so by legal right, we have to notify this person here to the south. We notified this person here to the east, and then we also notified this person here that owns this large tract of ground, which is about sixty acres, because his northwest corner touches Mr. Redmond's southeast corner.
And what is the, at the south end of the easement, what's the road that's going east and west, yeah, that?
All that, this is not a public road, this is just trails that this property owner has put in on his property, they're not, they're not public roads, they're not easements or anything.
And what about going straight south from the easement?
Right here?
Yeah.
That's just another trail. It's just another trail. So that's where we're at, so we're north of the city of Hutchinson, okay? At eighty second Plum, and then you go east now. What I would also point out, because I don't have my cursor, eighty second avenue is right here, you can't drive down, I mean, it, it's road right of way, okay? And it doesn't go all the way through, you can, you can take, excuse me, right here. So eighty second is in this point, when you get to the half mile line, this portion is in as far as right of way, it's just not being maintained by the township, it's right of way there, so. So eighty second avenue is only a half a mile long at that point, okay?
Eighty second avenue, that's the, that's the pathway that the applicant gets to his property.
Correct. So eighty second arrow is only a half a mile long, you can drive down it, and then you turn south and go down Severance. The other half mile, it's showing up as right of way, it might be labeled as what we call minimum maintenance road, but it's not being maintained by the township, you can't drive all the way through to Lorraine. So if we go a little bit closer, this is the quarter section, so this just gives you a little bit clearer view, you can see where, up in the left-hand corner, eighty second avenue kind of ends and turns into, to Severance Street, but going further east, it does not go and connect with Lorraine. It could if somebody wanted to build that road, but it doesn't right now, okay?
So by doing away with this right of way, and except for that little triangle that we were talking about, that, that means that there's no properties in there that are basically landlocked and don't have access from a public, public road. Is that correct?
Right, that's correct, yes. Going in a little bit closer, these are the, the names of the four people that we, we notified. Again, you've got the road coming down, it is Severance, and then Severance just kind of bends into Rolling Dunes Road. That easement then continues on to the south and terminates at Mr. Redmond's southeast corner. Doesn't go any further now. He's in a subdivision, so he's what we call platted. Mr. England lives in another subdivision called Cedar Hills Replant. The land on the east side is unplatted, meaning it's not part of a, of a residential subdivision, okay? I bring this up for that, this is a portion of Mr. England's property where it says North Seventh Street, okay? However, this subdivision has been replanted. When the replat took effect in two thousand eight, that did away with Seventh Street as a platted road right of way, okay? The dotted lines that you see, uh, barely there, that was another public road that was part of a bigger development. When it was replanted, those two roads went away, so where we're, where we're looking here. Here's where the current easement is, right here, okay? Here's where Cedar Hills Replant subdivision is. Seventh Street was actually a platted road, a forty foot wide road, right here. We had a subdivision in place at the time, I didn't look up the date, several lots. We had Seventy Eighth Avenue that would be running all the way, and would connect to Seventh Street right here as part of another public road. I was here at that time in two thousand eight. The gentleman that owned this stated that he could not afford to build the roads. What can I do to be able to get rid of those roads and sell off two or three lots? So we said we would do what we call a replat. So when we replatted this into three other residential lots, by doing that replat, it eliminated Seventh Street here and eliminated the other road here. So what you're seeing right here, this is like the, uh, the old plat here, it's, it's, it faded because they're still showing what the plat looked like before it was replatted, but this street is no longer in place, and so. My point with all this is the fact that this easement, it does not continue and connect to another potential road. This is all private property right now, this, this forty foot easement is just sitting out there, and there's no way to connect it to anything else.
Okay, the, the track there that says Ibarra or whatever, yeah, that one, uh, you made a comment that that was not buildable?
It was not a buildable tract.
It is not?
It is now.
Because of that triangle?
Because of right here. It's actually a map now, so this, this little piece right here is what Mr. Redmond sold to the property owner at this time to give this property enough road frontage to be able to make it a buildable tract and eligible for a permit for a new house.
Okay.
It had access, it had about twenty seven feet of public road access, twenty seven feet, never met our regulations, and so, uh, it was not a buildable tract. It could still be farmed, you could still run cattle on it, you know, put hay on it, get your tractor down, you could still drive down there, do what you want with it, you just could not build any kind of single-family dwelling on that property because it was not divided correctly at that time. Okay? The other thing I wanted to bring your attention, this was part of Mr. Farrenbacher's, uh, email originally, is this was what I would say a, a sketch drawing, uh, prepared by Wilson Company for Westar or Evergy now, at this time it was done in twenty fourteen. I would note on here that, uh, it said that this does not constitute a boundary survey, so they did not go out there and survey all this. I bring this to your attention because of the fact that, of that email that you had received here. This drawing is incorrect, because it is showing that Seventh Street goes all the way up and it's in, is not in. It shows actually an easement on the other side of the property, uh, with Ms. Ibarra and Mr. Farrenbacher's property, and that is also incorrect, so. It's an interesting drawing, but it is not a survey, it was a sketch drawing, I believe the sketch drawing was done to highlight the power line easement that is on Mr. Farrenbacher's property, and that was the sole purpose of this drawing, if you will. I think the drawing, uh, made a lot of assumptions out there because, like I said, Seventh Street on that subdivision plat, that was done away with in two thousand oh eight. This survey that you have here is in two thousand fourteen, so they did not do the research or did not realize that Seventh Street was.
Was diagonal easement.
Diagonal.
That's the power line.
Yeah, you go back.
Totally unrelated to what we're talking about.
Totally unrelated, yes, yeah, but still, uh, it goes to probably what, yeah, there's a power line easement that runs through all those properties. Okay, so, questions so far? So we can look at some, some aerial photos of that. So this is a larger, up at the top, you'll see eighty second avenue going from west to east, and then Seventh Street goes to the south. And then that easement, of course, just extends on down, because Seventh Street was part of that forty foot easement, it was just never built on Mr. Redmond's lot, and so they stopped it for whatever reason, I don't know, it just stopped, and they just built half of that. Going a little bit closer, this picture was taken from Google Earth in twenty nineteen, you can see, there's no semblance of anybody driving on it, it's full of trees, uh, it's, it's his property, there's grass on it, everything, you know, there's no, there's no tracks on it or anything like that. The, the road, like I say, you see on the bottom of the screen there, that's not a public road, that is just for what you can call like a trail on somebody's property. This picture taken from two thousand oh seven, that's the latest ground shot from, from Google Earth, that is a picture looking south at the easement, you can see the electric pole right there in the corner that is not part of this vacation, therefore protecting the rights of the utility companies. I'd say it pretty much looks similar to that, except for the fact that, you know, the trees are probably bigger or there's more numerous, and so that's what you're, you're looking at right there.
And that's where the triangle is?
That's where the triangle is, correct.
And, and Mr. Redmond sold that triangle to the other?
He did, he sold that to the previous owner, who then took, turned around and sold that twenty acres to the current owner that you see identified on my screen.
Well, I, I guess I would just like to commend Mr. Redmond for coming up with that solution, or agreeing to it at least.
Agreeing to it, yeah.
To not leave somebody landlocked, it's quite accommodating.
No, it wasn't landlocked, but I mean, I know what you're saying, it wasn't land, I mean, they still had access, they just could not construct any kind of, of dwelling on, on that property, so.
So, uh, it looks like basically every property in the area has a residence on it now, except for the formerly non-conforming property?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, if you go back to this drawing. Single-family dwelling here, single-family dwelling here, this sixty acres has the dwelling way down here, and there's actually a single-family dwelling up here on this eight acre, or seven acres right here, up here right now, but not part of that, of this issue here, but there is actually a dwelling up there right now, and so.
So really everything except for the one twenty acre has kind of been.
There's intent, I know that there's intent, they've expressed a desire sometime in the future to build a dwelling there as well, uh, so. To start to address Mr. Farrenbacher's email, what I would point out to the board really is, you received a, a very long and detailed email from him with, with concerns and objecting to the proposed vacation. What I would point to the board is, the first paragraph of his email has nothing to do with planning zoning or this, this case or anything like that. You know, complaining or objecting to how the land was sold, all of that, the intent of it, the intent of the land has nothing to do with this case. The second part of his, his email does have planning zoning concerns, you know, in there that we've addressed, so. So it was expressed that Mr. Farrenbacher may, if somebody wanted to parcel off this, this land here. It's about sixty acres, so if you can picture, this is probably a forty, and then down here would be like a twenty, okay? So he maybe at one time wanted to parcel this twenty acres off, okay? Under current zoning regulations, it's zoned agricultural right now, so the minimum parcel size is forty. If you want twenty, then you got to rezone and you got to plant, and so parceling off twenty acres for a home site is not, is going to be against the zoning regulations. Parceling off twenty acres to add to somebody else's land for a non-residential purpose, extra crop ground, pasture ground, whatever, you can certainly do that, but you don't necessarily need to have road access to that, so. In order for him to, let's say he wants to parcel this off and develop home sites on this twenty acres or whatever, whether it be one home site or it be multiple home site, under subdivision regulations, he's going to have to build a public road. First, he's got to rezone it, and this board's got to agree to a rezone to the residential district, then he's got to build a public road from, from this point south to get to this twenty acres. Okay? Currently, he would have that forty foot that he could use as a public road. In order for us to approve a subdivision, you're going to have to have a seventy foot road right of way road, so, you know, he's going to have to acquire at least thirty feet on this side. You get it down to this point here, he's still going to have to have a seventy foot road, either dedicate the land himself over here, purchase a portion of the land over here, and then depending on his development, he's either going to have to cul-de-sac it to provide turnaround for not only the township, but emergency services, or he's going to have to continue his public road to serve the rest of the, the lots that he wants to create.
In that scenario, if since Severance Street is already being maintained north of that in a narrower right of way, would that set a precedence for this other?
No, we wouldn't, no, I mean, it's, ideally it would be nice if it was seventy feet, but that was one of the issues that we did back in the day, before my time, plating half of a road right of way, that's, that's why we have the situation now, that half road was platted with the idea, I'm sure, of when the other side of that land gets platted, they would dedicate the other, say forty feet, create an eighty foot road, but that never happened, and so now we're left with situations like this where we have half a road on somebody's property that's, it doesn't meet any kind of regulations, and so therefore, it doesn't make much sense.
I'm just more concerned about if, if there's any precedence set there, and you, you, there isn't.
There not, no, not really. Ideally, it'd be nice to have that eighty foot road all the way up to eighty second, but there again, you're having to purchase right of way from two other property owners right there who may not be willing to do something like that, and so. I think the practicality of bringing a road down there is, is very difficult. I don't think that it would ever happen. The gentleman does have access off of, off of the other street, off of Lorraine, should he ever want to develop that rest of the property, like I say, he can sell it right now to somebody else for added pasture ground if he wants. Like I say, he can sell it right now to somebody else for added pasture ground if he wants to, but, but there's, there's no other easements out there. And so, the 40-foot easement on Mr. Redmond's property is not really serving any purposes other than that. And so, the rest of my report you see contains, you know, my analysis and write-up on those three factors that you need to consider in your deliberation and your recommendation here, but based off of what I've seen and reviewed on this case and, and taking into consideration Mr. Farrenbacher's email as well, okay, as part of the public record. Staff recommends that, uh, the board, uh, vacate this 40-foot easement, so.
Mark, I'm not sure I followed everything you told us, but right now it appears to me like that, um, over the 60 years, 1968 up to present, there's been a lot of things happened around that piece of property, and it appears to me like that vacating that right-of-way, that 40-foot right-of-way is just a completion of everything else that's been done. Am I interpreting that right?
I'd, I'd say you're, you're right on with that. Hopefully, everybody somewhat understood, I tried to, somewhat go slow, but please, please ask if you wanna see another picture if you have any questions.
I think you adequately explained, at least you cleared it up in my mind, with some of your slides and whatnot, and sure, you said it's a lot better than the stuff we got from that email.
One thing I would add, going back to the, the miles section, um, so, again, 69th Avenue and 82nd up here, so, we're up in here, so Severn Street is in as a public road. Here's the middle of the section or the half-mile line, and so, used to have Severn Street platted but not built here. The next time you see Severn Street is south of a half-mile line, right here, in this subdivision, right there. And I haven't been out there in a long time, so I don't know if that's even constructed at all. You know, these roads, 73rd and 74th lead into their, um, I have, like I said, I haven't been out there, so I don't know, but it's at least platted, but it gives you an idea that south of here, down to 69th, there's, there's nothing. There's nothing, so, you know, if this was in and being used by residences out there, you might be able to make somewhat of an argument. It's not, it was done, it's never been built. Um, I didn't drive out here to verify this or not, but I, just based off of our parcel mapping, it looks like the road, potentially maybe, and at least the right-of-way is probably there, but it's probably hasn't been constructed, would be my, my guess. But I think it gives the board a sense that is Severn Street ever going to be connected from 82nd to 69th? Probably not in our lifetime, or probably never. I can tell you that, you know, the county doesn't want any more roads, I can tell you that, Don could probably confirm that, and I know the township probably doesn't want any more roads either, so, at that point.
Any other questions for staff? Staff can have anything else to add? Thank you. Staff? Whoop, back up, we're skipping, skipping the staff here. Uh, is there anyone in the audience that wants to, uh, wants to comment? I don't see any, so I'm gonna forego reading the rest of this, uh, that, Commissioner and Commission, do we have any further questions for applicant or staff?
Nope.
Nope.
The public hearing is now closed. Acceptance or denial of vacation request must be based on finding that proper notice was provided to the public. The public will suffer no loss or inconvenience by such vacation, and no private rights will be injured or endangered. This is a time where the planning commission can discuss the case and ask procedural questions of staff on it.
I wanna add that the, I appreciate the comments that were given for this case and the path that was, that was used. That was, you know, we, we talk about the communication piece to, to get us the information, and it was, I have to commend that, the, the people that did comment via Mark, that, and Mark shared all that information with us. That was, the system worked perfectly. Is there any other discussion on this case?
I'd just like to say that I, I appreciated the background information on the replat to the south of Rolling Dunes, 'cause I was, I drove out there and looked, and it doesn't really look like there's, it doesn't look like there's anybody using it as a road or that there'd be any intent, and, and knowing that Severn's easement extended to the south, but at a previous time in history, you know, it was decided to remove that.
Right.
So I, I think that, that helps me a lot in kind of understanding it, understanding the intent of where this part of the county is going as far as development goes. So, thanks for sharing that.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments? Not a chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that case number 2023-07, request by Jack Redmond requesting the 40-foot easement for future road and utilities located on Lot 6, Block 1 of Rolling Dunes subdivision be vacated as described in this petition, finding that proper notice being given, public will suffer no loss, and no public rights will be injured or endangered, and based on the reasons as listed in the staff report. Second.
Good move and say, and any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, staff, please call a roll.
Swirfliger?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Now, just note for the record that Vice Chair Martin, you know, has arrived, and so, I would ask, Martin's vote?
I didn't hear the whole case, I said.
You can, you can vote, or you could sustain if you like.
I would sustain it.
Okay. I wasn't sure when you arrived. Um, and then Gertson?
Yes.
Motion carries. You got 40 more feet of property.
Okay. Appreciate it, guys.
Thanks for going through the process.
Yes, thank you. I apologize for being late, one of those situations that only people have employees.
No problem. I didn't, I wasn't sure when you arrived, so, um, but later I saw-
I didn't know how much I missed, but sorry to miss it, it was an interesting case.
Okay, next item of business on the agenda is, uh, discussion of the text amendment to, to table of contents, Article 15105, zoning regulations and creation of Article 25 to the zoning regs to establish a commercial solar energy guideline. I'd like to start off the, our discussion of these regulations, I think in the, in the spirit of, of maybe streamlining where we're going with our conversation and maybe even helping out staff with their focus of their energies, I'd like to just start kind of the way we started our conversation some months ago, going through, starting at page one, and we find, and if we, if just kind of go through and see if we have a, an agreement between us that, like, for example, paragraph 101, that beats all of our intent, and we can move on. That would basically close, not, not close the door to discussion on that paragraph ever again, it would just, just indicate to the staff that you probably won't be focusing on, you won't need to focus as ever is, as immediate efforts on it. Now, if we do come up while we're still reviewing it and say, well, I, I said I liked it, but I didn't, we can, we can then revisit. It's not like we're closing the door on, on the discussion, we're just, it, it does, does two things for us, it focuses our efforts and our, our, our discussions, and it also focuses staff's efforts moving forward. Kind of, the, the motivation behind it is maybe to, to, not to, not to stop our, our conversations on any of these, any of these paragraphs or any of these articles, but to kind of push us off-center and move forward. We've been, we've discussed them for quite some time, and I feel we can, we can probably move, move forward, maybe next month or so, and, and get a, get a hard document. So I'll just, uh, start off, I, I, it, it seems very, very elementary, but I'm just gonna start off, right off with the paragraphs. If you have any questions, comments, please, please speak up. If you all agree, if I see a bunch of head nods going on, we're gonna move right, right on fairly quickly. Paragraph 1, uh, 25-101, purpose and intent.
What I might add, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, last month, Mr. Seltzer had sent us some possible changes. It was too late to get it on the, the document for July, but I, I took those. You might also recall last month that we made a public statement saying, you know, please send me any comments if you have anything. Based off of that, that statement here, uh, I have started to receive some comments, and I have four, you all, some of them are from citizens, some of them are from other, other entities, I've included all of those comments to you. I've taken some of them, mainly Mr. Seltzer's comments, and tried to incorporate some of those for your, your review. Uh, there's also an anonymous document, peer review if you will, for lack of a better term, that submitted some comments, and so I, I took that document that you received in your packet. Some of the changes I, I added, other ones I, I did not, I didn't like some of those, but they're all still open for discussion. Plus, you received other, like I said, comments, and so if there's anything in, in those comments that you like or someone would like to incorporate, then certainly just let us, let us know, 'cause this, first and foremost, you know, your, your document, what you, if you would want to see in the regulations, so, everything you see in red is really based off of Steve's document and then that other anonymous document that was submitted here with that. So on 25-101, this is, uh, what's highlighted in red was something that Steve had suggested he wanted to kind of shorten, shorten that word and that, where that paragraph a little bit, and so I just, uh, wrote that these guidelines do not apply to a private solar energy system. I had, if you recall, you know, a little bit more lengthy guideline, if you will, and so he thought it should be shortened, so I just shortened it simply to that and the fact that we've got, um, a definition of a private solar energy system in the, in the definitions.
But I still have Mark Burnover as a private installations, and this, this says, these guidelines do not refer to that. Will there be any guidelines that apply to a private install?
Not unless that structure would be located in a floodplain. If you're doing some type of roof mount on your house, I'm not gonna be involved at all. If you're doing some type of ground mount, then I would be only involved if, in fact, it's gonna be located in a, in a floodplain. But other than that, then, no. You'd be able to install it where you see fit and as many as you want, so long as it's for your private residence, if you will.
No setbacks of any kind?
No setbacks. Nope.
And this would apply to, uh, somebody that got a, uh, special use permit or conditional use permit for a small shop or manufacturing plant, and they wanna put in a private system?
Yes. Yep, so I've, yeah, if they did, if they went through that process, then if they wanna add solar to that, yeah, we wouldn't necessarily review that, 'cause the regulations specifically say it right now anyway, that we're not reviewing anything that's private solar, so, yeah, even if they did a, a conditional use permit, you wouldn't be permitted to add a condition of approval or, or something on there that says they have to build it, you know, so far from the property line, 'cause this regulation says right here that we're not regulating it.
So, in, standing on what Garth asked, then as far as setbacks on a private system, there would be no setback requirement from a property line, so they could put panels right up on the property line if they wanted.
If they wanted.
Where, I don't know, if it was a building, we couldn't do that.
The building, you can't do it, but-
But this is a permanent, more or less permanent structure, so have, you know, what's, what's the difference? I mean, I guess I, I guess I have some turns on that, you know? Maybe then, maybe that's a different text. Yeah. Text amendment change. Yeah, I don't know where you'd fit that in, not as part of this, but somewhere else, I would, I would have an issue allowing them to just put those right up against the property line.
Well, I, I don't wanna hijack this project, because we're talking about commercial solar energy systems.
Right.
And I think we should stick to that, but-
About solar energy systems and-
But, you know, separating out the private system causes me to want some guidelines of future project for this group.
So now you're thinking you want to regulate residential solar, then?
Uh-
A little bit.
A little bit? I mean, I'm thinking of myself as a neighbor to somebody who's gonna, I mean, who knows what somebody might wanna do?
That's why we're having these discussions, that's why you're asking, you wanna regulate private? 'Cause I mean, if you say it doesn't apply, then there are no regulations.
Is there any way, is there another section somewhere that we could, you could put a setback for, you know, solar, you know, pedestal solar systems or something?
Yeah, what we would do is we would do an amendment to, uh, it's like Article 2, 3, 4, and 5, which is the zoning districts where they're located in, I would assume this board would want to permit residential solar by right, meaning that somebody can just come in and get a permit and put it up without going through this process. So if you do that, you amend those sections of our zoning regulations to say that a residential solar unit is permitted by right, and then you would have a set of guidelines under each one of those zoning districts, gotta be 20-foot off the property line, or you can put up no more than 10 panels, we, whatever this board wants to do, and then anything more than, say, 10 panels, using that as an example, would trigger a conditional use permit. I mean, it's whatever you got to do.
Yeah, I mean, my only real concern is setback.
It's just setbacks.
Can't build right up to the, the property line. We're, we're, okay, we're kinda touching on that setbacks context. Where did, where would that, I mean, we wanna, I mean, we wanna discuss that, that was on our plate after, after these solar regs. Mark, where, how does that fit in? How do, how did that, how does that conversation, just setbacks in general? Yeah, we talked about- How does that, how does that apply to something like this? Probably wouldn't, would it?
Well, I mean, you, you would have a, I mean, we have setbacks right now that-
Right.
For buildings, and we were going to, that's one of our projects in the future that we were gonna look at once we complete this, so those for building, you could have a totally different set of setbacks for a, a solar, a private solar panel or so if you want. You know, you don't have to buy, buy buildings, you can say, well, we don't care if a building is 10-foot from a property line, but if it's a solar panel, we want it to be 20.
So from what you're telling me, if somebody wanted to put in pedestal mount solar on their house, their home, they could put it right in the front yard, right up to the property line?
Yes.
No. I mean, I don't know anybody can do it, but, you know, I'm sure somebody would or will.
Yep.
You know, you know, I mean, that's the thing.
If that's the best place to locate it for the best sun, yes.
Is there a parallel, uh, parallel guidelines or regulations for oil and gas?
Oil and gas isn't regulated by the county. Oil and gas isn't, we don't regulate that.
So I could, I could, you could put somebody to drill a well right on the property line?
As long as it's inside the right-of-way.
Yep.
As long as, as long as everything, all the equipment after all, after the well is producing, in that case, a oil well, it'd have to be inside the road right-of-way.
Again, except for floodplain, but yeah, yeah, we don't regulate oil and gas.
It kinda sounds like this may be expanding the scope of our general setback revisit.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's, you know, it's, I don't wanna get bogged down- Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's, you know, it's, I don't want to get bogged down in the commercial solar thing on this, but I think this is also, you know, an issue that we need to address, you know, in the not-too-distant future, just so we've got it covered, you know. I know we're, we're planning to talk about setbacks in general later on, but, you know, what's later on, you know?
Well, we've got, we've got a moratorium here until December 31st.
Yes.
And it would be crazy for us to ask for an extension.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I understand.
So I think, I think we need to be, we need to focus on this right here, and whatever else is, that, I mean, we'll put it on the list, the buzzword is we put it in a parking lot for a future, for a future discussion. I think that's where, I think that's where the private solar energy discussion needs to land. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in favor of developing a bunch of regulations for private solar. I'm, I'm only concerned with setback, you know.
It could be something, it could be as simple as that, if you, it doesn't have to be 15 pages, it could be...
It doesn't have to be.
If you don't care about anything else but setback, then it could be something as simple as that in, in those sections of the zoning regulations, under Ag R1, R2, R3, and V1, those five were...
That shouldn't be included in this document.
Not in this document.
Yeah, not in this document, no, it's not in this document, this is for...
Back in the general, yeah, general regs and...
You would say here, though, that these regulations don't apply to private, please refer to Articles 1 through...
Yes.
Right, but we need an article before we can do that.
Before you can say refer. Right now, you just...
So for today, we do that.
Right, so for today, we probably need to leave this.
Yeah, just put that on the to-do list.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody agree on 101 is okay?
Yeah.
Okay, 102?
Yes.
I didn't have any changes in this one, so...
Okay, 103? So 103, which is the definitions, based off, like I say, a lot of these changes are based off the documents that I received and Don and I had reviewed, so, under the participating landowner, I just added the additional phrase at the end of that, that says, "Or otherwise agrees to partake in the commercial solar energy project," just to make it clear. If you can think of a better word than "partake," I'm, I'm ready to listen here. The concern was, you know, you could be a participating landowner and not be, having any panels on your property, so maybe I don't want them, or my land isn't conducive for them, but I like the project and I want to participate in it, so you could be a participating landowner and, and agree to receive money for that, or without having any panels, and so I clarified that by adding that in there, so...
How about if you use the word "participate" instead of "partake"?
Can you do that?
Yeah, I like "participate" rather than "partake."
And that'd be on the next, on the non-participating, so...
Are we using the word "participate" to define the word "participating"?
Well, that's...
Well, it seemed a little redundant.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll do what you want, but that's exactly why I said "partake," because I don't like defining the word with the definition word.
We was there.
So I'm with you, Alan, on that, and so...
We'll go back to "partake" then.
I don't care.
I'm not a big fan of "partake" either, but, yeah, that was my other option, yeah.
Yeah, I don't like using the word to define the, the definition, and my synonyms didn't give me a word that I was, that I was happy with, and so...
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna put you on the spot here, we get the old Thesaurus You probably did that already. There isn't anything...
I knew there was a reason I used "partake," and Alan reminded me of something.
You're pretty, it just pretty much is it. There isn't the... Enter into agreement. Engage, that might be a good word.
Eat or drink something?
Agrees to engage.
Join in?
Agrees to engage in the, in the commercial solar energy project, engage might be a good word.
Or join in. Commercial.
Yep.
Just join fixes it.
Yep.
Join.
I like that better.
Join.
Yep.
So what do we do, change it to what?
Join in.
Join in the commercial.
The "in" is already there. Pardon? In the commercial, yeah, join.
And the last thing I did was, since we last month were talking about, I believe it was in relation to setbacks and principal buildings, I added what a principal building is, and that was taken straight from the wind. Right, it's what a principal building is, because if we're gonna talk about setbacks from principal buildings, we need to have a definition of what is a principal building, so I added that.
That makes it clear.
Okay, everybody good with 103? 104?
105? You had some changes there, Mark.
Yeah, so, Russ, you missed, missed that unless you watched it. Recall previously, we talked about when, when a new conditional use permit is required, or that you were prohibited from adding additional panels if it was more than 5% of the area, so I reworked that a little bit and removed the 5%, I had to have comments that said that was a little too restrictive, and so what this is trying to say is that if you've got a certain area that has to be on the approved site plan through the conditional use permit process, if you have that area, then if technology changes, and one way or the other, where you can have smaller panels, or you need to have larger panels, you can do all that within that site plan area that was approved, so long as it stays within that area. So you take it, for example, you know, a 100 by 100 area, you can put as many panels in that area, that 100 by 100 area, or as little amount of panels as you want in that area, without going back through the conditional use permit process, so long as you meet all of the other regulations, like regarding height and everything else.
With current technology, you could, on that 100 by 100, you have 200 panels, let's say, and technology changes, and the panel size goes smaller, and you can put 400 panels in its place, they don't have to come back, and you're still within that same footprint, but you're not...
Yeah, you're good with that, right?
Yep.
So does that, what I have there, say what we just said? That would be my, my request of the board that way. I think it does.
Rearrange the location of the panels, the changes compliant with the approved conditional use from the site plan.
We really don't care if they're facing, if they go diagonally rows across that piece of property, or if they're what they do, we just want to maintain that footprint. I think that's, that's the, that's the land use.
Like you say, it could be...
We don't care less what's on top, while we do care, but I guess what's on top, we'll let them regulate it.
What you've done, Mark, fits the right spot.
Does it?
Now, the site plan would basically show the boundaries or whatever of the actual panel placement, right?
Yes, it will.
And then any ancillary buildings for battery storage and...
Yes, it will.
Inversers and other equipment and stuff.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
So that would all, that part would be static, couldn't change unless they came back to us.
Yes.
That to build per the site plan that they...
Right.
Has to be per that site plan.
Well, do we need to mention buildings? I mean, we're talking about panels, but, you know, if the trend is more towards battery storage, and I'm not even sure what, you know, what that might include, but probably something different than just panels.
That would be set out in the site, initial site plan, though, any, any battery storage...
As long as it still fits in the footprint.
Yes.
The initial footprint, I get that, but we only, we only talk about panels here.
Well, but if they add a new building full of battery storage, that changes the site plan, doesn't it?
Yes.
So then that would trigger...
The site plan is gonna show the panel locations, and then also the, any ancillary building, the support buildings for, you know, inverter, battery storage, et cetera, et cetera, equipment storage, and those are gonna be, you know, fixed per the site plan, is that correct, Mark? So if you're gonna put up a 20 by 30 building for battery storage, you've got a 20 by 30 building, okay, you can put more batteries in it if you can get smaller batteries, or different kinds of batteries, but you can't build a bigger building unless you come back to us.
Okay, well, that's getting to my question, maybe there would be fewer, more efficient panels, but more battery storage required.
Then they'd have to come back here if they needed more space.
But it would still fit in the footprint of the original site plan.
But it doesn't meet the, but the site plan defined where the batteries were and where the panels were.
So it's, I'm saying, you've got a 20 by 30 building here for battery storage, the site plan.
So that's it?
Yeah.
Can't change anything?
Can't change that unless you come back and ask for a revision of that, if they need a bigger building.
Okay, how about if they don't have a building for batteries? How about if batteries are outside?
Outside.
Like, take a power substation, you know, and you've got this big transformer that's 20 feet square, if the battery technology becomes, the batteries don't have to be in a building.
Well, are they on...
Only they don't need.
I was gonna say, are they on the current site plan, or, if they aren't, then wouldn't that trigger a new conditional use permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Just like all, all applicants that I deal with, with conditional use, you know, I always encourage them to think beyond the here and now, and so, you know, right now, they may want one, one area set aside for battery storage, well, if they envision potentially another building or two within whatever area it is, within that site plan area, then you put that on there, so then you know that, okay, panel one or building one is gonna be now, building two and three could be 10 years from now, then if it's on that approved site plan, then it's just a permit, here you go. Any changes or anything not on that site plan is back through you guys.
It could be just like area one.
Area one, yeah, yeah.
Battery storage.
But it has to be specified in the site plan.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you would say area one, area two, and then you gotta label what that's gonna be, it's not just gonna be...
Potential building for the batteries.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you just lay out an area.
Exactly. And then that would be okay, because it was approved.
Because it was reviewed by staff and approved by you through the public hearing process, so it would be okay, so they wouldn't come back through that process again, but if they just put one, one section out of a battery, and then say, "Hey, this is going great, we have an opportunity, technology's changed, we want to put three or four out there," back through the process.
I think the language we have in there now is very good.
I think it works.
Yeah, I think it works.
I think he was thinking that if technology changes, and they had a footprint for panels, and then technology changed so they could have the same number of panels, but they're a lot smaller, and now you can build a building in that footprint, no you can't. That's only for panels. If they, if it got smaller and they needed less panels, they'd have to come back here to build a building in this one. Yeah, that's my question.
Yes. Okay, everybody good on 105? Okay, 106? Confiscation Development Plan.
Page 25-3.
25-3, and then it spills into 25-4.
I didn't have any proposed changes.
Okay.
Um, okay. In 106G, the power capacity of the project, so they say it's gonna be a...
18 kilowatt or what?
Yeah, right. If panels become more efficient, they could put out more capacity in the same space.
Good point.
And do we care?
Good question, I don't, I don't think at that point we care, I think we're just interested in how many megawatts this is gonna be.
Yeah, but I mean, they could be putting out more.
Yeah.
More megawatts with the same...
Yeah, same footprint.
Same square footage of panels.
You could change, I'd say, the initial power capacity of the project.
We had, we had a very similar comment when we did the wind, you know, whether or not technology would change to where the tires could, you know, it'd be higher, have a higher producer, or they change the equipment in it to where it would change. I think it was, that was just a baseline to understand what, what was going in.
I think that's just information, just for the board, just out of curiosity, but if it increases because of increased technology, then I don't...
Already said they could change the panels if they need to.
Nothing in here says you can't increase the power coming out of it.
Okay, I don't know if that's a concern, I'd be...
It'd still be subject to all the other requirements as far as setbacks or noise or...
Yeah, that would not change.
Height or...
Yep, correct. Good question.
Okay, everybody good on 106? 107? Steve had this last month under number 6, that all solar panels must be designed and constructed to minimize glare or reflection on adjacent properties, roads, aircrafts, or create a safety hazard plan per any local state or federal regulations. I'm not sure on the, on the whole glare thing yet, I'm not convinced if it's that big of a deal or not.
I would hate to not have something in there.
I think you need something, but I don't know how much.
Right.
But I don't know if it's a bigger issue or not. Everything creates glare.
I mean, it could be if you're living over next to the thing and the panels are throwing glare into your household, so, yeah, it's, it could be a big issue.
But depending on the time of the day and the time of the year.
Yeah, oh, sure.
It's gonna change, maybe a problem for a couple of days, and then it's not.
Everything creates glare, so, I mean...
Oh, yeah.
And then what is that?
Even the top of my head does, sometimes.
Yeah, so, but I add that, if you're, we can leave that, one, and then...
What is a minim, what is minimizing the glare, what's that mean? To what? Minimize it to what?
Yeah, what's the, what's the, what's the measurement?
What, how, what are you, what are you regulating, how you gonna regulate, what that mean, what does that mean?
Doing what you can to lessen any glare onto adjacent properties.
Is that like when you tell your kids to clean their room?
Yeah.
What's the definition of clean?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think it's covered in that first black plan. The applicant shall provide a solar glare hazard analysis report utilizing the latest versions of the solar glare hazard analysis. In other words, let the applicant... In other words, let the applicant convince us before we give them the permit that it's going to be okay.
I look at that, that for the red, the stuff in red is kind of a preface to what, Mark.
Yeah, you have comments in there on that section, you know, from another person that says it's not needed, that that's all regulated by FAA anyway, so.
Well, for aircraft, it is, yes.
Yeah, did, I like that question on, from that document of input, number five, where it says within one mile, well, are we, are we superseding the FAA if they say two miles, or should we just leave it approval of the FAA?
I think you leave it as approval of FAA.
Yeah. That's where I was kind of at, leave it at their discretion.
For the public, for the public airports, they're going to be pretty tight on what they want and where.
Yeah.
The private ones.
And it may change over time, and we're, you know, we put this in our regulations.
Well, the one mile is only, I think that's a condition, though, if you read that, it says if the, if the project is placed within one mile of an airport, then that has to ship, provide acknowledgement for location approval from FAA. So if it's two miles out, then they still have to comply with FAA, I would assume. You know, it's just part of the process. We're just saying it's located within a mile, we want.
We went through this with the wind. With the wind stuff on, on private, private airport, airstrips and such. FAA does not have any bearing on those at all.
Nope.
I mean, they're registered, they can be registered, but if they're not registered.
The wind?
We, we went through all that, based upon where you could place them, based upon a registered airstrip. So.
Do we need to separate public and private?
I wouldn't. I guess I have the same issue, you know, at a public airport, you do it at a private airport, you just might have more traffic in a public.
Yep, correct. I'm satisfied.
On, on number nine, it was, it was written that that was maybe too broad, so it was a question to have a clearer definition. This is all just about, give us some simulation pictures of potentially different vantage points or whatever, what the project may, may look like. That's all it was intended to be, it wasn't meant to be something very complicated or time consuming, because often they'll give you simulated pictures of just random different areas, not necessarily of every single, you know, section, and so I tried to clarify it there, because you recall with the wind, you know, that they had some simulation pictures just from random vantage points, you know, just to kind of give the board and, and the public an idea of what it may look like, and that's all I was asking right there, so I tried to clean that up a little bit.
Okay. Are we all good there?
Well, what, what do we decide on the FAA one mile? Are we okay with the, with it as is?
I think so.
Yes. So we're setting a one mile, where's that at exactly?
It's number 12.
There's a couple places.
Five?
Five, and then it does, it's addressed on, on number 12, I can't.
Oh, do we, are we duplicating there?
So one mile, we're requiring FAA approval, and two miles we're requiring.
Well, no.
Airport operator.
No, because the first one, five is addressing, saying, okay, I mean, you can combine the two. One is saying that you've got to have approval from FAA if the airport, or if the project is one mile in airport. And 12 is basically just saying that.
You're just.
They're contacting the, the airports within, any concerns addressed and satisfactory ownership.
I think whatever setback, my opinion, of what is for a public airport should be the same as for a private airstrip.
They have the same issues. You're facing the same issue whether it's public or private.
So do we need to define it there?
No, we don't.
It's just whatever the guidelines of Federal Aviation Administration has for public will apply to private airstrips also.
Done.
Yeah. That's on number five.
I like that.
But do they have to get approval from the FAA?
I think you could look up what, what it is for public, you know, it can't be any closer than this or this or that, and it applies for private airstrips also.
You understand that, Mark? Yes, I do.
And that's private airstrips that are actually dedicated as airstrips.
They ought to be registered to private airstrips.
Exactly.
Because if they are not registered, that, it's just a grassy knoll that's been used.
Somebody's got an airstrip in their cow pasture, yeah, that counts.
That's correct. Because we went through that with the airstrip down here south of Yoder. He had it, he came up with a XYZ 54, or wherever it was, that was the registered number.
Residential fly-in community.
Okay, everybody good on 107? 108?
Under the setbacks, this is what Steve had suggested last, last month, I believe, so we change it to a hundred foot from the public right of way, and then participating owner, trust, corporation, or other entity owning multiple adjacent parcels is not subject to the property line setback requirement. So this has to do, if you own multiple parcels, then you don't have to be setback from a property line, you know, for.
It can be continual, it can be a continual line.
So I thought that was important to add that clarification in there, because, you know, there's lots of parcels, there are lots of deeds recorded, and so you don't have to be setback from your own property lines, so we added, added that. To make that clarification, if you've got several 80s.
I bought parcel one, and then 10 years later bought the, the adjoining parcel two, that, that deed and property line does not, it does not apply to that.
Right.
If I want to go across that property line.
Right, maybe a separate taxing parcel, but if you own both, then you cross that taxing parcel line and continue on if you need to be.
Hundred percent.
And in letter B, you know, we added 500 feet from a non-participating landowner's principal building, so that's where I added the definition of principal building, and then I removed the, the word participating that got put in there, and so you're 500 feet from a non-participating landowner.
500 feet seems like a lot.
It does seem like a lot, I think personally, but it's.
Especially if I can put an oil well on the right of way.
You put an oil well on the right of way, but you can't put a panel, solar panels. You know, this is strictly for discussion purposes and whatever the pleasure of the board is on that.
It's a building full of lithium batteries.
500 feet is enough.
May not be enough, yeah, five miles.
I think we do have that back in the battery section.
Okay.
There's another requirement.
What's really not 500 feet from the property line, it's 500.
Well, the building's 300 feet in, from the property line, and it's only 200 feet from the property line, so it's, you know, it's just trying to provide, because I mean, you know, everything I've, I've, you know, read on this thing, I mean, a solar installation like this produces both glare and noise. You know, the, the mechanics, the inverter, or something even hum from the panels, so it does, does, you know, produce this, this stuff. That's why I came up with the 500 foot, saying, okay, we need a reasonable buffer to alleviate, you know, the effects of, of that solar farm from somebody's house. Would you like a 1,200 acre solar farm, you know, 150 feet from your house? Who wouldn't?
It used to be 100, so we had, we had it, we had it 50 feet.
Oil derrick.
Well, yeah, well, unless you own the order of the acre, but we're not regulating oil derricks, you know, we're trying to write regs for solar, and I guess we have a chance to try to get it right the first time this time.
I don't know what the magic number is, I just, 500 feet seems.
We've got a, we've got a West Star Substar Transformer Station a mile from us, and we can hear it hum. It doesn't bother, I mean, each, each person, it bothers something, each person will take it differently.
Yeah.
But that thing, my refrigerator makes more noise when I'm sitting on my couch than that thing does. Now, that's a mile away, that's not 100 feet.
Right.
I get that, but still, I don't know, I don't know that.
Look at the size of these projects, you know, they're going to be 1,000, 1,500, 2,000 acres, you know, so 500 foot setback is not, you know, ridiculous.
Alan, I know that the, the solar array in your neck of the woods is 1,000 acres.
No, it's not 1,000 acres.
But it, I mean, you've gone, you've, I mean, you farmed near it, you've been around it. I mean, what do you experience on that?
So, so I can hear the hum as my wife and I are on our bicycles, and we pull into the driveway, and I stand next to the fence, I can hear the inverter hum, although as she will remind me, my hearing may not be what it used to be due to bad decisions on my part in the past. But, but there is a hum, but I would categorize it a lot like you were talking about, the, the transformer, it's not something that.
But also, this is a smaller project than something of this magnitude we're talking about here.
So, but at least on the small scale, it's there, but it's not something I, my fridge is noisier.
Well, we say somewhere, we haven't got to yet, 60 decibels, and I think it's 500 feet.
Until we get into, yeah, the noise thing.
I looked up, well, what is 60 decibels? Well, they compared it to your dishwasher running, or a conversation between two people sitting three feet apart, which doesn't seem very loud. I couldn't hear somebody talking, two people talking 500 feet away. If we're going to limit the noise to 60 decibels, I guess that's trying to.
There's some push-pull.
Think about 500.
I mean, basically, you have, the noise is one issue, and I guess the other issue is just the visual aesthetics. You want to look out your kitchen window at that, you know, a bunch of solar panels 200 feet from your house.
Right.
You know.
Okay, I get it, but we're not in the aesthetics business.
Well, yeah, yeah, we are, I mean, that's, it's, it's a valid concern. You know, and it has to do with property values and everything else.
There's something new, I mean, we look at our windows and we see power lines, we see oil, gas stuff. That's because we're used to it, and we don't think too much about it, or was there when we bought the property? I don't know, is there a industry number or?
I don't know if there is, you know. I'm just trying to say, you know, I threw out the 500 foot, and I, what I felt was a reasonable buffer. You know, if somebody is going to put a solar farm next to me, I'd like to have that thing at least 500 feet from my, my house, you know.
I think 500 sounds reasonable.
Yeah, I'm just trying to picture in my mind.
Well, I think if it was 500 from a property line, probably be something you'd really need to discuss, but from your, from a principal house, which is your home you live in.
Well, and if you think about it, so what's a, so what's a typical right of way width for a county road?
60 foot.
60 foot? So if you've got, if your house is 250 feet away from the road, and then you've got 60 foot of right of way.
You're at 310 feet, so you've got a 200 foot buffer.
Yeah, so now we're talking 200 feet, not 500 feet.
Plus, you've got to be 100 from the right of way itself.
Right, so now we're only talking, so now we're talking an extra 100 feet, and just in front of that one house. So I, when we first started talking about it, I thought 500 feet was a bit much, but I think now, thinking about it, that's.
Right.
I think it's a reasonable.
Especially in non-participating homeowner. I, when I first thought 500 is too much, too, but then when you think about it, it's not from the property line, which would be rough.
Yes, yeah, from the building.
A non-participating resident.
Yeah, and, and non-participating, I think, is an important point, because like, if someone wanted to put a solar panel in the property line of my house, and I was getting a check from it, that would be a very different. And, and I had the ability to have a say as to, you know, what's going on there, versus, say, the neighbor doing that that I have no control over.
I can get behind it.
Got one other change on there on three height, I think they had 15 feet.
My opinion, 15 feet could be too restrictive, supposing the standard design is 16 feet.
Standard's between 10 and 20 now.
What?
Between 10 and 20 foot, so.
I think the next Eric comment was.
20 feet.
Yeah, 20.
We allow a building to be 35.
Let's put a 20 on that. I don't have a problem with that.
It doesn't exceed, so, the reason I originally had 20, I thought it provided that, that buffer, because what do you do if, if they're 15 feet, 6 inches, are we going to do a variance, another, another process?
Tell them to dig their hole 6 inches.
Or, yeah, I mean, well, you lie out, but I mean, that's, that's what you're up against, you're doing a variance, you got pounded.
I know, it's, you don't want the game of inches to beat you.
Is 20 what you want?
Yeah.
That'll work.
Yeah, we want to make this easy enough for you, because it's same reason, same reason we went, the different square footage is on buildings. So, so it eased your mind a little bit, I mean, if, if we went to 25, I know, I know that there was comments that mentioned 20 was kind of the standard. Do we want to, do we want to look, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to get the green light to build something 25 feet tall, but if, again, we're talking about technology changes, do we want to handcuff them? Do we want to put, do we want to add another five feet in there? I don't know. I'm just, I'm just talking.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, that's, that's why I did the initial buffer.
Well, and we're still way under what we could build a building traditionally.
Right, right, because we're, what, 35 to the P.
35, well, 35, 35 in the residential, no height restriction in the ag.
Right.
But you've got to remember, you know, there's probably, what I would say, agricultural parcels, if you will, that could be 35, 37 acres, completely under crops or pasture or what have you, and there may be, they may be zoned residential versus the guy that owns 40 acres next door to him, that's going to be zoned ag, we, we have situations like that. So if he's in the ag, there isn't that height restriction under the current regulations, but the other guy's going to be restricted to 35 feet because he's zoned residential. And, take it, I've never done a, we've never had to process a height variance or anything like that. And, take it, I've never done a, we've never had to process a height variance or anything like that.
So a 35 foot building could be 17 foot sidewalls.
Yeah.
I mean, dirty numbers.
Yeah.
So 20 feet would probably be, gosh, plenty, and if the, if you start thinking of that, that, kind of, that, along that line.
I've never seen them being, being that, that high before, and I doubt that they would be, so.
20 foot sidewalls on a building is a big, big.
I think it's something, I think you leave it and then if, for some reason, there has to be an adjustment or amendment, then we could look at that in the future.
Good.
Eight and nine is dealing with battery energy storage and, and noise, this is, uh, Steve, I believe, again, is it Steve? I think you said that, yeah, and I just pretty much copied it verbatim the way you, you had it and let the board adjust as needed.
I'm gonna bump ahead to the noise. Do we need to get a, in that, measured from the property line? Or 500 feet from existing residence, shouldn't that read as measured 500 feet from the principal non-participating residence?
No. It's not participating, not.
A non-participating residence.
Yes, but.
Non, where's that at?
Principal building.
Well, if it's, you know, sixty decibels at the property line of the project, it doesn't make any difference where the house is. It's could be less.
Are you talking about the property line of the project or the pro- the boundary of a project?
Well, that's two different.
I'm not sure. Okay.
There's, I mean, that's, that's two different.
The project may only encompass a little square or so within a person's.
Within a section of ground, say.
Yeah, and so if you're talking about that, that's.
So it may be, property line may be, could be, you know, two, three hundred feet or more from the boundary, project boundary line. But it's still in the same park.
Tiny restriction.
We don't regulate any other land use to that, that extreme. I mean, think of any kind of manufacturing facility, you know, you, you can require insulated walls, you know, that type of try and, you know, muffle sound, but you don't say, well, yeah, we can let this manufacturing facility go in, but no sound from that facility can cross the property. I mean, that's extreme to do. I mean, that's, you just don't hear that.
I'm saying it's like you can't cross. It's just saying it has to be this level.
Well, at sixty is really a very low level.
Yeah, yeah.
Wind, you know.
It might as well be zero.
Very.
That's, it's on that conversation.
I think the original intent was that that would be the, the noise, maximum noise level at the, at somebody's residence.
Yeah. I think, I can see that.
Yeah, 'cause I think that the project line is a little on the owner's side.
'Cause the, the project line's not necessarily a property line.
Right, right.
See, so that's.
And the noise level within the project is going to vary depending on where the location of the inverters and stuff is.
Right.
And we could be flirting with, with a regulation that's either gonna doom it right out of the gate. And I don't know that we're, I don't know that we.
That's the thought that keeps coming to my mind is, do we want a regulation that will allow development in Reno County or do we want a regulation that says not?
Yeah, right, right.
Well, we want to be able to allow development, but I think we also need to protect the property owners too.
I think we go back to that sixty decibel at the, at the primary, primary building.
Yeah.
I think that'd be, 'cause that's, you're spot on when you brought up the wind rigs. That's, that's exactly what we did. It wasn't that they had to keep that wind noise at the, right at the property line. It was at the primary residence that they want, that we needed to measure. And I get, Garth, I get it where you're coming from, where you wanna mitigate it so to promote potential development. That's a, that's a tough one. That's a tough, tough line. I don't know how to, I don't know how to write one that would be good for both.
I mean, I think they need to do a study to where they have the natural winds of Kansas and put that wind right blowing off that project right to that person's house. Now, what will that be? And it can't be above sixty, not just on a calm day. I mean, they need to do some work on that. It's gonna be very, I'll, I'll tell you, there's a lot of these that's very difficult to, on how you're gonna regulate it. It's gonna be difficult.
Really, yeah. You don't have the budget for the staff to regulate it.
Well, is there any hard data that says these things put off certain amount of decibels? I mean, I hate to just be pulling numbers out of the air. I'm sure there's studies on that. I can't, I can't cite it to you off the head top of my head, but I've done some research on noise and it, it is surprisingly, you know, first I thought, what do you mean, solar panels noise? What are you talking about? You know, then I got to reading and the kind of well inverters and that there's also, they also generate a hum and you have all the possible transmission lines that are involved and all this kind of stuff and, yeah, there's, there's noise created. You know, it's just sort of like the whoosh, whoosh, whoosh of the, of the wind type thing, only this is just a constant hum, you know.
Or the ch- ch- of an oil derrick.
Yeah.
Keep bringing that up.
Yeah, you do. You got an oil well right close to you.
No, I just think it's, for me, it's a comparable situation.
Yeah. Probably some of the same conversations were had when irrigation was starting to be developed with irrigation water running.
Oh, my God, yeah.
All of that. I mean, it wouldn't.
It's not regulated the noise that, that puts off.
So I think, you know, if, if sixty decibels is the magic number at a primary, primary building, I think that.
So we just change that wording basically to say the noise level sixty decibels as measured at the non-participating property owner's principal building.
Well, I do think Harley's comment is.
Well, like nearest wall.
Just like, we'll, we'll, just like.
Just like.
But it's the nearest wall, nearest corner, yeah.
Yep, yep, or copy, copy and paste that.
Whatever, yeah, okay.
I, I do think we need to keep in mind Harley's comment about, you know, what do we want here? Because if we say sixty and the industry says, hey, we can't get it under seventy-two, well, we don't even need to, all we need to say is no noise and we don't have to worry about the rest of the regulation.
Well, when it's time for public hearing, they say that then.
They can say that.
Because the regulations aren't created until after that.
We get a public input and if they, you know, the solar people wanna come in and say, well, we can't comply with that. You know, industry standard.
We just need to get a ba- we need to get a baseline now.
Okay, I'm getting with that.
Okay. All right.
On the noise, on the noise level on letter D on the, on the.
Twenty-five.
Yeah. Construction noise shall be analyzed and mitigated. Again, kind of a general.
General statement.
Is that me? I mean, any additional thoughts on?
How do we analyze construction noise?
Yeah, that's, I mean.
Well, oh, you have a study.
I know what you, I know what you're after, but I don't know, how, how am I gonna, how, how do I enforce that?
Some of this you, makes you wonder, okay, we're talking about solar, we're talking about sun. How much of this is really gonna happen as, as, okay, you live in a house and you, you don't, you, you wouldn't, your house is your castle, but is the noise really gonna be just during the daylight hours? Is it just, is it gonna be during, you know, so I, 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 I parallel that with, with this construction noise.
You have the battery and inverters and stuff. I don't know.
They're not, they're not.
How those are regulated during the time period.
Yeah, I don't think, I think construction noise.
Yeah, like, you know, when they're building, they're gonna just be pounding these into the ground. You know, and so you're gonna have pile driver noise or whatever.
I don't think we're doing that or digging holes.
Who's gonna go out there to that project manager and tell him to put a, put a muffler on his pile driver?
Nobody's telling me that yet. I'm building a bridge.
Well, so my point exactly.
No, it could be if they chose to do some night work, you know, that would be.
I.
That would be.
It's still temporary.
There's some consideration.
That could be, that could be in the, in the development plan that the, that the commissioners do.
Agreement or in the conditional use permit where you say. Just strike that section.
I think it's.
That's my, my intent, hoping I didn't say that.
Good job, Steve.
Well, it's something that you really can't control. Yeah, I mean, I know it, it's, it's nice, I think, because, yeah, you don't wanna try to control it, but you can't.
But how regularly? Since we're on this battery section, I've been listening to the fallout from the fire in Hawaii and some of the local governments are starting to take some flak about not having enough safety barriers in place. And so I wonder, do we wanna have some periodic safety inspection required? I don't know where battery storage is or how, how dangerous it is, but.
It'd be a federal regulation or something. We wouldn't have anything locally that we inspect, something like that.
Well, and, and emergency management is signing off on this, right?
Yes, yeah, and so, so if there's something under their regs or so, yeah. I mean, they're gonna look at that. I mean, there's gonna be a lot of agencies involved with this. So, not something for planning zoning, but on that though, on letter D, the last paragraph there, we had five hundred feet of existing residents. The question was, Steve, with that, is your intent of any residence? So, meaning participating, non-participating, or any non-participating residents only? Or what do you think the intent was there?
Just a second, I'm reading.
Yep.
I would say, I'm referring to any residence.
I think that would be a smart move.
Oh, any residence.
Yeah, the battery storage location.
We don't wanna build the criteria.
So I would wanna keep it consistent with our definition.
It's money every month or every year. It's okay to be noisy.
Or non-participating. It has to be five hundred feet from any residence, yes. And actually, you get into the noise issue. That may help mitigate that anyway. Because that's where a lot, some of your, your noise is gonna be coming is from battery storage and inverters and stuff like that.
Yeah, I thought that's what you intended, but I'm not sure.
So what do you call them, the residents, their home or their whole property?
Primary.
Principal building.
Principal building.
Principal building.
Just like this residence.
Yeah.
Let's change it so it's all consistent.
Okay.
I, I thought that's what you were intending, but just wanted to make sure you clarified and try and use the same word that we have throughout.
Primary building.
Yeah, sorry, I think. Okay. Is that all right so far?
And you're right, I can, I can explain.
Number ten.
So we don't have a setback rule for the battery storage? Other than that's different from the panels?
So the five hundred feet from any, any primary building. Where the.
D. It's on, uh.
Yeah.
Right here. Eight D.
That's where we were looking and we, we, instead of existing residents, we thought primary, five hundred feet of any primary building.
So you devalue in the property that doesn't have house on it yet? If they only build it, if they build the battery storage a hundred feet away?
Boy, we can't, we can't bet on the come.
Okay.
It's kinda like same deal as the noise. It's gonna be the risk of the developer, if they wanna, if they wanna build within five hundred feet of, of a battery and they feel safe, then it's their, their prerogative.
Yep.
What do you have in mind on, on paragraph ten A?
Ten A, it was suggested in one of the documents to change the word. I had a different word there, so it was, change the word to mitigate. I'm not sure what I had. Trying to find it in the other document.
And that just has to do with radio, television, microwave.
Yeah. I don't know, I, I had a different word in there and.
You had correct in there.
Correct, yeah, okay, is it correct? Thank you, yeah. And so, mitigates, mitigates a better professional word.
That's the best one.
And then on letter G, looking at that, about creating new wetlands, if you, if you fill in or destroy certain wetlands, then you gotta create a new wetland equal or.
Bigger.
Or greater, bigger than what was there. That's probably really a provision.
Can you, can you even turn a grain of sand in a wetland?
No, forbid, I suppose, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
They got, they got a bigger stick than most people do then.
Well, it's like, yeah, if you wanna fill in a wetland, usually they'll say, okay, if it's okay with that, then create or relocate the wetlands somewhere else.
Well, that gives, that, that gives them the opportunity based upon the wildlife and parks and that kind of thing.
It takes it out of, it takes it out of the county's hand to require that. It puts it into fish and wildlife and the state, so that's what that was about.
I'm good. It's surprising, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you can see like road projects or a lot of, you know, I mean, yeah, it's not.
I'm, I'm thinking.
It's gonna be easy, but, you know.
Thinking of farm ground, the minute I get, get the, put the blade on the back of the tractor and go drain a wet spot in the middle of the field, they can start raising the whole again.
Yeah, I bet. So that's all I had in that, that section there.
Okay, good. So are we good on twenty-five on one oh eight? Okay, how about one oh nine? Does it make any changes there? Looks like that's pretty straightforward.
I'm taking the number two.
One oh nine, two?
Yeah. Again, it was, if you read that document or so, it was, it was suggested, say, replacing the, the two bottom feet with subsoil composed of.
I mean, that's a different.
One oh nine, twenty-five, one oh nine, two. Excuse me, I'm on one ten.
Yeah, you're jumping ahead of us. Pushing forward. Got any changes on one oh nine?
That's pretty, pretty boilerplate stuff, isn't it?
Yeah, I, I thought that's where you're at. I apologize.
Nope, you're good. Okay, we'll move ahead to twenty, to one ten. Rock and roll. Now it's, now it's your stage.
So, the type of material to be replaced after, after the decommissioning, we just added in there that it has to be a certain type of sand, silt, clay, or subject to the owner's private lease agreement. So maybe the owner doesn't want that type of soil, so give the owner the option of, say, well, I don't.
Scraped it off and they let it flat, leave it that way.
Yeah.
Then it's the owner's, that's, yeah, the least, the less easy prerogative. I like it.
And G, I just clarified that, again, based off that document where it said all the electrical equipment now has to be removed down to a minimum of forty-eight inches below the ground surface. And then in letter I, there was a little bit of concern about the landlord's right to be satisfied. We just added the phrase outlined in the developer's agreement or subject to their private lease agreement in there, so. That's something, you know, that each landlord, after you decommission, should be satisfied with the decommissioning on, on their property. So be subject to the lease, to the developer's agreement or, or their private lease agreement. So either just give them that option.
Hopefully they're reading the fine print before they sign.
Yeah.
It'd be hard not to, wouldn't it?
On number four, says, the very end of that, says throughout the life of the project. Does that include decommissioning? Or does that need to say including decommissioning? Yeah, I would think there's potential for complaints from landowners during the decommissioning about how that's.
How that process is going.
You're saying throughout the life of the project to include the decommissioning process.
Yeah.
And Mark, is legal to any of these words we put together?
Not yet.
Okay.
No, we're, they will, but yeah, not yet. Legal hasn't looked at it yet. I'd say, Garth, that the intent was, so yes, include the decommissioning, 'cause that's part of the project, if you will, from the start to finish. But this kinda just adds clarification.
Yeah, closes the loop.
Yeah, yeah, so a good catch.
And then I noticed on the anonymous input document, in the opening paragraph, they refer to that hundred and twenty day time period that kind of creates a, like a filibuster potential. If the county commission wants to kill a deal, all they do is put it off for hundred and twenty-one days and then they go back to where one.
Where you at on that thing, Garth?
It's the opening paragraph of one ten.
Twenty-five, one ten, okay, I see.
Yeah, I looked at that and Don and I both looked at that and we really don't agree with that, that statement. You know, it's a hundred and twenty days following the effective date of the conditional use permit.
Well, the county commission ultimately has to approve this project.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, if they wanted to kill a project.
This would just be an easy way to do it.
Would be another way.
Well, it'd be another way. You could just.
I mean, they could, they could approve it in their commission meeting and then if they don't come up.
I was trying to find where I.
They, they, it's all an agreement, within a hundred and twenty days, they could then have another chance to kill it. It'll give them a second chance.
Well, I think the concern was a hundred and twenty days may not be enough time to execute a developer's agreement and everything, but, but it also says in, in that paragraph, at the discretion of the county commissioners. So what that really means is, yeah, we want a hundred and twenty days. I mean, if we're gonna approve a project, then we wanna keep this project moving forward and, and do something with it. But if there are disagreements between the two parties, then the county commissioners can certainly extend that hundred and twenty day timeframe to whatever they want at that point. But this was just put in there to say, let's keep this project moving forward and not just have it approved and then sit around and do nothing. So, so that gives the commissioners the option to extend the hundred and twenty days if they so choose. If, if there's.
If they're at day one fifteen and they say, boy, we got another thirty days on this, we're gonna extend that, that grace period to get, get it closed.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they've already approved of the project, so, you know, why would they turn around and, and kill it? That's why we, that's why I had the word at their discretion in there. That gives them the option to say, well, everybody's negotiating in good faith, so, yeah, let's, we can extend it, let's keep going. Exactly. Okay, one eleven. Are we done with one ten? Sorry, I'm just gonna hit your. Okay.
One eleven?
That, that terminal there under number three, which SW PPP, I don't think I've ever seen that before. I've always seen it SWPP. Where are you at?
Oh, I know, number three.
Stormwater pollution prevention plan.
And I may, maybe, I don't know, but many years ago, it was, it was SWPP.
Just that, okay.
Yeah, stormwater.
Pollution prevention plan.
Pollution prevention, not pollution prevention. But I may be wrong.
Um, I'll check and see. I think I've always seen it as three Ps.
Oh, well.
Pollution prevention. I'll, I can check it. Yeah, I mean, it's good, I will be accurate. I mean, if, if it's SWPP, then it's.
I think that was, that, that addresses one of the concerns on the comments that we got about stormwater runoff, that kind of thing. I think there was some, there was some comments that we got.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's still one of my unresolved issues I've got lurking in the back of my mind is not necessarily the stormwater runoff, but, again, general environmental concerns because as I understand, a lot of the land that is currently being leased up for a potential solar site is, you know, within a reasonable distance of cheat, like, you know, which supplies which does drinking water. So you don't want anything that's going to have runoff or pollution to the extent that it, it would be affecting the groundwater, water sources going into that lake. So, I mean, I still haven't got in my mind or found a sample.
I forget, what's the state of Kansas, what's the, what's federal and, and Canada Department of Wildlife Parks? They've got a, a bubble around the lake.
Two or three, three miles, I think it is.
Three.
Yeah, I think it's three miles. But, you know, that's for development and stuff, but.
I think that, the, the sold, when we did the wind, they, they held to that pretty tight.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I know this is, this changes a little bit because of the runoff may be a little different 'cause they plane the ground and make it flat and maybe divert.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna change the, you know, landscape. And, you know, depending on the, what all is used.
Well, I think they should have a drainage plan. I think they should have a drainage plan.
And that's where that SW, SW PPP comes into play. It's exactly what it is.
Putting discharge elimination.
What you gonna, what, what you gonna do with the water when it, when it leaves your property?
Yeah. All right, we'll leave that for now.
Anything on, Mark, you struck some out on twenty-five, one twelve?
Yeah, on one twelve. Number four, I don't know if I had a change there or not. I think that might just got highlighted by accident where I had notify the ZA if a, a change is made in the field representative. I don't know what that would've said before, so I think that was probably just an error on my part. But on number six, I struck out, the applicant or its construction company shall disturb or clear a site only to the extent necessary to assure suitable access for construction, safe operation and maintenance of the facility. And so, really, that's kinda hard to define, you know, I think as far as only to the extent necessary, I mean, a company's not gonna probably disturb more land than what is absolutely necessary but for the fact that it's just gonna cost them more money to do something like that, so. I felt like it was, it was hard to enforce something like that. I mean, how do, how do I enforce this and, and argue the point that you're disturbing more land than what's absolutely necessary for this project? It'd have to be pretty extreme to, if you're only putting a ten acre solar area in one ground and, and you got thirty acres disturbed, I mean, yeah. So I, I felt like it'd be probably better just to strike that.
They're not gonna push anymore, not another grain of sand more than they have.
Well, exactly. That's kinda where I was.
'Cause that's just, adds more cost to their project.
Right, so I.
They probably will be interested in tree removal.
Right.
I mean, they create shade on panels, so. And it's just another maintenance item. But I don't know how, how you enforce, enforce that.
Well, it talks about.
Private agreement.
Talks about without approval of the affected landowner.
Yeah.
So they're not, that's, that's between the, the developer and the, and the lease signer. What trees can come out above and beyond what their, what the expectations are. So if there's a, if there's a grove of a hundred foot tall cottonwoods that border the southern border of this, of the projected project, then it's up to the landowner that owns those trees and the developer to decide whether they come out or not.
And that could almost, I had thought about striking that sentence too, 'cause that's really between the property owner and the company through their private agreement and that's something that I'm really for, so I, I.
Mine or yours?
I debated about doing that.
Oh, okay. You can keep.
That's all the changes that I have based off those two, two documents right now.
Back up just a minute, you know, when we were talking about that stormwater. Where it was.
Page twenty-five, fourteen.
Yeah, the stormwater pollution prevention plan and national pollution disturbance. You said something about drainage. Do we have anything in here that requires they submit a drainage plan? I can't find it if there is.
There should be.
I don't, should be, but I. Quickly thumbing through it, I haven't seen it. Let me put it that way.
Well, we have the soil erosion drainage. Well, we have the Soil Erosion Drainage Sediment Control and Stormwater Runoff Plan.
Where are you at?
Uh, page 25, 10.
25, 10.
Could tell you the exact words.
I'm just trying to thumb through this.
That's 25, 108, section 11.
There you go.
It seems like it'd be inherent in the Stormwater Pollution Prevention.
Yeah, I was just quickly trying to thumb through this.
I know. Well, I thought I'd seen it somewhere, but then I couldn't see it either. I thought, well, maybe I just...
I knew we should have it in there, but I just, you know, didn't see it.
Okay. I don't know if we have talked about it before. Isn't there maybe under number two, under...
We, we hardly, we saw it on 25, on page 25, 10.
Yeah, item 25, page 25, 10, item 11, 1.
And then the, the section two of that is, is required the applicant shall pay an erosion control permit for the project from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Shall include new split fire tube construction of solar energy system facility. Measures listed amount shall be the minimum required under the issued KHK permit. So I, I think it's covered.
Yeah, it is, it is. I didn't, I didn't see that when I was scanning through there real quick.
Well, the first thing we talked about, talked about.
Don't remember everything. I'm old. My wife tells me I don't remember a lot of things.
We've done, we did a pretty thorough review of the total document. I suggested, Mark, if you want to clean up with those changes, and we could look at them next month. What, what would be, what would be the desire of this board? If we could get a clean document next month, would it be, would it be suitable to start thinking about our public hearing date if we got a clean document next month?
Next month or October.
I mean, we would review, we would, we'd review, we'd review the document and then potentially have a, I would, I could see, I don't know, I'm just, this is me just spitballing. Mark, you, and Don, you need to give me guardrails if I'm out of line, but I could probably see a setting a public hearing date somewhere in, maybe in latter September, first October.
Special meeting type thing.
Yeah, a special date. What's, what's, what's the thoughts here?
That's my, my suggestion or whatever, or what you guys want to do. So...
And that would be, that would be all contingent on if we got a clean document next month and we all said, yep, that's good, we roll with it. What, what are, what are your thoughts?
And to say, I mean, there's no, there's no big pressure yet, of course. Should, should be the better. So you don't have to. And then even when you set the public hearing date and we have that public hearing, if, if there are comments that you want to take a look at, then all you would need to do is just continue that public hearing, just like any other case, and, and review those changes. Or if you think you have enough comments from everybody, then, and enough evidence, then you can close that hearing. And then we would come back for, for discussion, you know, at that point. So you still have options, obviously, to take more public...
How much notice do you need for the public hearing?
So that's what, that was my, my next statement is that it's gonna require 20-day notification, just like any other case. It's gonna be in the paper, which right now is still Hutchison News. But it also requires notification to all the townships that are affected by this. And it also requires notification to all the city councils of the cities that are affected by this.
How in the world do we know? You're gonna be sending it to all townships and all cities because we don't have a project.
No, for the regulation change. That's for the regulation change.
Well, that would be all, all townships and cities.
Okay.
Within the zoned area.
Within the zoned area. So we have a list, it's within three miles, so it's gonna include cities like Mount Hope, believe it or not, because Mount Hope is within three miles of our border, so they have a right to know of the change that could affect their future boundary. So, so I have that list. The, the issue is that, you know, I have to write a public hearing notice. With the paper the way it is now, they're requiring four to five days notification to publish something in the paper, believe it or not. So, you know, if I send something to them on Monday, it won't be published until like maybe earliest that Thursday or Friday. That's how they are. And it used to be I could send it to them and get it in a couple of days. Now it's up to like four days. So coupled with that...
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
Pause. Coupled with that, you know, the townships and the cities have to receive that notice 20 days in advance. And so if you take our public hearing date in September, which is the 21st, I believe, and then you go to October, and I don't know when it is in October, that time period in between though is really tight.
Yeah.
And so you're looking at either needing to set a separate public hearing date to give me enough time to get this legal, or pushing it off until like November and giving me like a 60-day notice. It's just because of that, because in between public hearing dates, you know, there's like a month, like 30 days. Well, if I need a week, you know, for the paper to publish it, plus I have to write the notice and then get it to everybody.
Or if we have a special meeting towards the end of October.
You can certainly do it in October, toward the end, like the following, you know, week, but...
Then punch in the middle, you want this to go through legal for them to put their comb on it.
And then we gotta go through legal too. And so, and we can do that if, if you think this might be the document. Plus I need to get it back out on the web with these changes. And so, so there's, there's some work to do with this. September, we have one...
Would it hurt to say, okay, you clean this document up and you go and let, like, I know it won't happen tomorrow, but you clean this document up tomorrow and Monday you give it to legal pending our final approval in September, at the September meeting. Is that an okay plan?
If this board thinks we're at that point, if you, if you think we're at that point where I can take this to legal...
Well, even if you did and we did subsequently make any modifications to it, they would only have to review the modified areas. They wouldn't have to review the entire document.
My, my opinion is, is we're probably, there's probably some small little pieces of the puzzle that are probably gonna get some change. I don't, we're not gonna change front page to back page.
There should very well be changes after the public hearing.
Oh, yeah.
Just because you're saying this is good now, and then we move forward for a public hearing doesn't mean you're done.
Doesn't mean this goes through. But we sure, we sure want a, want a solid document before, if that's what I'm getting at. So, so, okay, then I would suggest, and with the, with the rest of the board's consent, that once you make the changes, that you go ahead and, and let legal take a, take a spin at it. That way, if all of a sudden they review it in August, you come back and say, okay, here's all the red letters legal showed. I don't know that that could happen that fast. I don't know that. But it, it, that, that would keep this ball rolling as well.
That would allow us to discuss any, any legal issues that they come up with at our next meeting.
So, so, so to be clear, so as of right now, this is good. As of right now, send it to legal so they want to change a word if they want to, or whatever, or anything's illegal. At that point, when that's done, do you want this to be publicized and go out for the public hearing? Or you want to look at, at again and then?
I would prefer to wait till September, our meeting, look at it.
Okay.
And then, you know, find officially on it if we want.
I think that's a good plan. If we, if, if it gets reviewed by legal and, and they give their rubber stamp, and we review it in Sep, at our September meeting. I don't know if that's a timing that's even feasible, but let's just say that that's, that's possible.
That'll be done.
Then, then September, we could be setting the public hearing date and moving forward.
So the public hearing date could possibly be sometime first couple of weeks of October?
No, it'd be the end of October.
Twenty days. And I, it's gonna be gone the end of October too, so, so you need to...
Cancel that, sorry.
Cancel it.
Not toward the end.
I'm on vacation the first full week.
I don't think I've approved that.
Yeah, you did. How long time ago?
Okay.
Ten months ago.
Jack did a good job last week.
No, I think it's a bad idea.
My thing...
You did some good last month though.
Yeah.
But I didn't have a crab angry.
You didn't have a bob.
Angry sun worshippers.
So the public hearings in the latter part of October.
Hugers, you know. And then it's, so it's possible that if you make any changes after that in November, then it, then maybe this could be done by December, so we don't have to, you know, extend it.
That's kind of where I'm thinking.
So I say, it just takes, it takes a while.
If the wheels, if the wheels grind, we do that on the wind rigs.
Is there, is there ever a case where you have to have more than one public hearing?
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, I take that back. Not more than one public hearing, but more than one day of a public hearing.
Yeah, I know that, but...
No, you only have one public hearing.
You just don't. So we have a public hearing, then we can make changes if we desire, and then, then we're hanging on.
Just like a case, yeah.
We would just continue the public hearing.
Then you'll...
Then go, come back, make any changes we want, and then reconvene the public, the public hearing that's continued.
You'll have a public hearing, you'll take in all that evidence. If you want to take in all the evidence and then close the public hearing and take no more evidence, you can do that. You can continue that and take additional evidence. If you want to pause the hearing for a week, you can pause it and review all the evidence that you receive and all the testimony you receive, you can do that as well. And then you just need to state when you're gonna be coming back into session so people know.
Yeah, I mean, you know, up to this point, you know, the two, two or three little emails, pieces of stuff we got this month, that's the first outside input we've had. You know, so you look at when we had the public hearing on the solar thing, it was a...
You got a lot of...
I can... I would say...
Make these corrections.
Yep, I think, I think we're all in agreement that if you can get this to legal as quickly as you can make the changes.
And that could happen, that could happen next week.
So we, so we review a draft, a solid final draft, you know, I could see that final draft being the final before the, before the hearing.
I mean, we're gonna be mailing it.
In September.
We're gonna be mailing it to you prior to the next meeting.
I can email the corrected version earlier so you can review it. And then, once I get it done, I can, I can mail it to you quicker than the, there's only one case for next month.
Even just the email, email.
Even email's fine, because...
Yeah, yeah, I'll do that. So you have more than just a week to review it.
Save your stamp on that. Okay, for sure. Any other business to be brought before the board? We've discussed a lot. A good evening.
Appreciate it.
Very, very productive evening.
I'd move to adjourn or order a pizza.
You're hungry too.
I would move to the pizza, back to the adjournment.
It's been moved to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
All in favor of adjourning, say aye. All opposed, same sign.